Your business.
I, what, what do you mean, you mean? Did I?
Or you look like you needed to, uh, clear things out.
Oh, I did not end up, nope. I maintained myself.
Good job.
I didn't want to experience that twice.
Yeah, that was impressive. Get a haircut?
Me? Jimmy? Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like I just lost all my street credit at the skate park, but, um, looking sharp again.
You're like a new man. Very nice.
So I think your barber lives across the street from me, Jimmy. You're regular.
Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, great guys, um, that local business therapy valley.
I thought, I thought there was gonna be a few in the council chambers.
This evening.
For six o'clock.
Oh, gotcha.
Great, we've got everybody here, it's four o'clock. So I'll go ahead and ask the, I'll call the work session order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Agent.
Here.
Clegg.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Alrighty, I can't see everybody, I need to do a different view so I can see everybody. We have, I think, one agenda item tonight, and that is housing, and it looks like Mark and Elizabeth are here, unless Rob is here to do that as well, and Jade are here to talk with us about our Home for Everyone strategy. Thanks so much for joining us today.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members. I'm just trying to see if Rhiannon is on, but, uh, Anna Marie and I are going to-
Yeah, sorry, I missed Rhiannon's. Rhiannon, thank, welcome.
Because Leanna, Rhiannon's are critical to us, she's gonna operate tonight, so, uh, Anna Marie and I can cover. But, we're gonna cover, I'll give you an update on our grower housing program, and I'm gonna kick it over to Anna Marie for start, start.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Yes, did I miss something?
Uh, on the amended agenda, we do still have, um, the Budget for Airport Enterprise Fund with Rebecca Huff, which I see is, um, at the meeting.
It was my understanding, hi Rebecca.
Hello.
Sorry about that, I, I thought that we had removed all budget, all budget pieces, but I guess not the airport. So Mark, false alarm, we'll, um, hear from Rebecca first, sorry, I'm not looking at the agenda. And we'll hear from Rebecca first, and then we'll, um, talk, discuss housing strategy.
Alright, thank you, I thought that I maybe had looked at it incorrectly, so.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if we need to, but I did get a memo, I'm looking for it, about a motion acknowledging the amended agenda. And, so, just to be, just to be safe, why don't I, I move that we accept the agenda as amended. Um, things got changed due to not knowing, um, when the agenda got printed, what would, what would be available, we'll hear those at a later date.
Second. We have a motion, a second, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, and now Rebecca, welcome.
Thank you, it's good to be here with you. I'm just gonna go ahead and share my screen, can everyone, one, hear me okay, and two, see the screen? Okay, perfect. So, and I will go through this relatively quickly, I think some of this will be a repeat, but since we do have new members of the council, I didn't wanna, just go over, uh, the airport budget, and then just some things that are shaping the budget for this, for this next year in fiscal 2021. So just, quick overview of the airport, where we are in terms of air service, um, how we're responding to COVID, because obviously that impacts our funding for next year, the budget overview, and then how this will all impact the BUI upgrade program that we had planned, and we're thinking about starting. So just to recap, the airport is an enterprise department, meaning that we are funded solely through revenues generated at the airport. We're not funded through the general fund, it's a completely separate funding source. And we had over 4.1 million passengers in 2019, that's looking pretty unlikely for 2020. Uh, but, back in the good old days of 2019, uh, just over 4 million passengers. And really, we always talk about how the airport is more than just the airport and the terminal, it's, um, 200 tenants and a $1.3 billion, um, economic impact on our region. Everything from passenger service to cargo, general aviation, uh, medical transport, uh, NIFC, all of those things. So when we look at air service, again, this was pre-COVID, we're thinking that we're gonna see some new non-stops this year in 2020, including, um, Atlanta, which had been long on our wish list, and then new service to Everett, um, and then increased frequencies as well to some of our existing destinations. So, um, that has all changed, unfortunately, and it appears that the airlines are going to not move forward with Atlanta or Everett, and we're really in more of a holding pattern. Um, we do have strong market share in Boise, our market is very fragmented, which actually is good for the consumer. Um, Alaska and Southwest have been vying for that first place spot, and as you can see right now, Alaska has inched out Southwest just by one percentage point in market. But this basically ensures that our passengers and our community have strong air service and are not overly reliant on one particular carrier. Again, these are just metrics that we use to compare how Boise, um, compares to its peers. You can see that our seats per capita are very strong compared to our peers, and also our airfares are very, uh, competitive compared to our peers. I think everyone's seen those slides before, but I did just wanna include them to shape the discussion. So, also, as you can see, initially, we were projecting that both the number of flights and the number of seats would significantly increase, um, in 2020, to the point where we weren't sure where we're gonna park all the airplanes, or how we were gonna park all the vehicles, but you can see that in May, um, both flights and seats decreased, and the airlines are continuing to change their schedules on a daily basis. Again, just to frame the discussion where we were, 49% growth in a five-year period. And now with COVID, what we've seen is a dramatic decrease, and passenger traffic, um, decreased as much as 95%. So to put things in perspective, on a normal day, at the airport, we would see about 7,000 passengers go through our checkpoint. And today, if we have 1,500, that would be a good day. At the bottom of the pandemic, we had just between 200 and 300 passengers per day going through the checkpoint. So, very significant impact, um, in passengers and also in revenues. This puts it into a little bit more perspective, this is where we are for 2020 year-to-date. You can see that January and February started off strong in terms of increases, and then in March, we did have a significant decrease. Passenger numbers were only down 50%, and that's because the first two weeks in March continued to be strong. Um, you can see April was down 94%, and we won't have the numbers for May until the middle of June, but we expect that that will continue to be down as well. So, I think I've covered this in memos to the council, we have increased cleaning, our employees are following CDC guidelines, we're all complying, uh, with the mayor's order and the state's order, we have proper PPE. Um, our employees are either working onsite, the airport never closed, we continue to be open as an essential service, and then other employees who can do their work from home continue to work remotely, make sure that the business of the airport is getting done. We've installed everything from sneeze guards to floor decals, to make sure that we have good communication for passengers about the social distancing, we have audio announcements and digital signage. Just making sure that we are communicating well with our passengers. As you can imagine, all of our tenants have been significantly impacted by this downturn, and the financial implications has been severe. Uh, the airport was awarded about $19 million, just under $19 million, in the CARES Act funds. And we project that this will provide at least eight months of funding to cover our operating, maintenance, and debt service. Uh, realistically, we think it could cover, um, expenses through the end of the year, but based on budgeted numbers, we think it will provide at least eight months. Our tenants and council provided, uh, approved an ordinance that allowed us to waive and defer rents. So for the airlines, we deferred airline rent fees and charges for April through June. And then for rental car companies, we've deferred their rent fees and charges, and we also have transitioned to, rather than a minimum annual guarantee, a percentage of revenue. In both of those cases, all of those revenues are required to be repaid in fiscal year 2020. Which gets us to the budget discussion, and traditionally, our cost per in-plane passenger, which is the metric that the airline uses, um, for determining, uh, you know, just how you compare to your peers. Boise has always fared very well and been a very cost-attractive air, airport for the airlines. For 2021, our goal is to have a net zero operating cash flow, so to have our revenue and expenses match. Uh, you can see that our revenue mix, over a third of our revenue comes from parking. The next largest share comes from the airlines themselves in the terms of, uh, fees. Car rentals and industrial land are pretty evenly split, and then terminal concessions account for about 11% of our revenue. On the expense side, it's really divided into three categories, personnel, maintenance and operations, and then depreciation, which is a non-cash expense. So when we look at our M&amp;O expenses for the year, we're anticipating about just under $18 million in M&amp;O expense, and this is flat from fiscal year, um, 2020. In our budgeted revenues, we're showing a significant decrease based on what we anticipate will happen in 2021. Uh, I won't read all of those to you, but again, those are our major revenue areas and the projected decrease in those areas. For capital equipment, I think it's important to notice, and our capital improvement program, um, it's important to note that we put this in our budget, so we have the flexibility to move forward with projects if and when demand warrants. But we would not move forward if we did not have either the demand or the funding to do these projects. Several of these projects have their own independent funding source. Um, some of them are used, uh, funded through airport revenues. So the rental car facility, again, this is perhaps somewhat misleading because it's the total cost of the facility over the term. This would actually be funded through a customer facility charge that is charged on each of the airline, or each of the rental car contracts, and, um, would be funded through a bond and then repaid over time. The public garage and exit plaza, again, we're just starting to sign on this, we would not actually commence construction on this project unless demand returned, um, and warranted it. The taxiway upgrades and construction, as well as the apron design, the snow removal equipment facility and the NAVA relocations, those are projects that are all eligible for grant funding. And so the airport share would be about 7%. And I touched on this a little bit already, but our project funding sources, so grant revenue will receive about $6 million in grant revenue. Uh, the passenger facility charge will generate another $4 million in revenue. Those will go towards specific airfield projects that have been identified in the PFC application that we submitted earlier this year. And then the customer facility charge revenue will be about 1.3. If the project does not fall into one of those categories, it would be funded through operating cash flow. I do wanna touch on our upgrade program, because obviously, we're planning that based on previous passenger numbers, but with the significant downturn, uh, we have paused a number of things. So, all new construction has been halted that wasn't already underway. The most significant is the parking, employee parking garage project, we did send a memo to council on that. And we'll reevaluate these projects as passenger traffic and the economy improves. There are a number of projects that are continuing to move forward, the transportation aeronautics hangar is currently under construction. The apron repaving project is under construction. The economy lot improvements, uh, started back in April, I believe. And we are opening bids tomorrow on remodeling our office, that will help us with the social distancing and making sure we have sufficient space for all of our employees. Uh, replacement of drive gates, these are just sort of annual maintenance projects that we're doing. The taxi lane Sierra, taxi lane S, is the taxi lane that will go out to the Idaho Department of Aeronautics. Um, and while we did postpone the parking garage for employees, we did complete and are working on the utility relocation for that project. So if and when demand returns, we're ready to start with construction. Uh, the same thing with the design of the public garage, the rental car garage, and the exit plaza. So we're continuing with the planning, but not with the construction. And that concludes my presentation, I would be happy to answer questions for council.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, councilman, was that agent?
Yes, um, I have a specific question, but first, I guess, just the observation that you thought you were gonna have a really big, really difficult year with all of this stuff we had going on, and you did get a really big, really difficult year, but not at all in the way you expected.
Yes.
I, I don't envy you at all. My question was about the, the, uh, contract deferrals that we're engaging in with airlines and other leaseholders. Have any of them, any big ones, started trying to have conversations with you about changing from deferrals to forgiveness? And it's, it's a question about predicting 2021 revenue, and whether there's gonna be a potential hole in your budget, because all of a sudden, somebody wants their deferrals to convert it into forgiveness.
We have not had that conversation with any of our tenants, and when we drafted the deferrals and the transition from the annual guarantee to the, uh, percentage, we really worked with our airport peers and other locations to make sure that what we were doing was consistent with what other airports are doing. And so, we tried to take an approach that was not as generous as some, but more generous than others. And so we tried to really take the middle-of-the-road approach that provided immediate relief, but did not sacrifice, uh, the airport's financial position.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, council president.
Thank you. Rebecca, um, i- it's clear that revenues are gonna be down because of, uh, uh, fewer flights, fewer rental cars, all of that. Um, what about the expenses? How, how are they doing so far in terms of balancing or not with, uh, the revenue that we're getting?
I didn't include it in the presentation, but I do think it was included in the memo that was sent. When we look at airport expenses over time, over the last five years, while passengers have increased almost 50%, expenses over that same time period have only increased 10%. And so, the way that the airport was operating is we were generating additional revenue and putting it into a capital reserve account, so that way we would have it to fund things like the employee parking garage, matching our share of the federal grant projects and some of those things. And so, what we're projecting is a flat budget in 2021 over 2020 in terms of expenses, even though some of our costs we know have gone up. For example, uh, contract costs for the union for both police and fire, our cost allocations have gone up. Some of those other things that we know have gone up. We're still projecting that we will maintain a flat, um, expense in 2021 over 2020.
Follow-up if I could, Rebecca, um, so some of the items, although I know we're doing enhanced cleaning, um, with the fewer, uh, passengers, fewer rental cars, fewer concessions being sold, aren't some of those expenses actually going down? And, you know, because we, uh, or are those just contract, and so it's the contract employees that are not coming in?
So when it comes to concessions, those are our tenants, and they're not airport employees, proper airport employees. Our employees are the ones who are maintaining the facilities, the infrastructure, so the terminal, the airfield, all of those things. And a lot of our costs are fixed, they're regardless of the number of passengers that come through, which is why, even though passenger numbers have gone up significantly, our, our expenses haven't gone up significantly. So, could we argue that our costs might go down because the number of paper towels being used in the terminal are going down? Possibly, but that's probably offset by the increase in cleaning supplies that we're using in other locations, and sanitizer, some of those things. So I would say that our costs are probably fairly consistent.
Thank you, and I'm, I'm asking these questions just so the public can understand, because I think the public sometimes sees this and goes, well, wait a minute, with fewer passengers, why, why are you still spending as much? So I appreciate that.
And one area where we have cut costs significantly is in operating the shuttle between the terminal and the economy lot. And because we do not have demand, that warrants operating the economy lot right now, we have discontinued the shuttle and all the parking is closed, and that is a fairly significant, um, expense, about $20,000 a month. So that's one area, for example, where we are able to cut expenses. Of course, the flip side is the revenues also decreased.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
I didn't see who that was, but go ahead.
Uh, council member Hallie Burton. Rebecca, thank you. Uh, Rebecca, thank you for the presentation, I've got a question that's maybe just a little bit more long-term, budget-wise. I'm curious if there's been any discussion in the airline or airport industry about any type of long-term changes as far as business travel goes, as people have moved more on to digital platforms? If there's any predictions as far as we might expect to see long-term decreases in business travel?
There's lots of predictions, and they're all over the place, as you can imagine. And that's one of the things that we really need to look at, um, is how quickly the industry comes back. It looks like predictions are three to five years, um, and it could very well change the mix between business and leisure travel. Um, I think there's always going to continue to be business travel, just because there are certain things that you need to do in, in person, but I think we may see an increase in, you know, online platforms and online usage. So it'll, it will be interesting to see how the industry changes and develops. But there's lots of predictions, but no one really knows.
Yeah, thanks Rebecca, I think predictions are, are real difficult right now, but was wondering, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, council president, for Tom.
Hi Rebecca, I miss the airport so, so, so much, and I miss traveling so much, and I cannot wait to get in there and go on a trip again. Um, my question is actually kind of related to that. How are, I, I read an article this morning about kind of the different ways that airlines are dealing with, um, some of the protocols like mask wearing, how are you seeing that roll out at the Boise Airport?
All of the airlines virtually have required that any passengers who are flying, that they are wearing masks, and we are seeing that here in the terminal, and they're also requiring their employees who are interacting with passengers to wear masks, TSA also has a requirement for their employees when they are interacting with passengers to wear masks. Uh, the airlines, many of them have voluntarily decreased the number of seats that they're selling on flights to about 60%, it depends, I think every airline does things slightly differently, but they have decreased the number of seats that they're selling on flights, so they can allow for some more spacing. Um, and they are looking at reworking their route structures as well. So some of the flights that we had previously have, uh, been removed, for example, Houston, Minneapolis, Sacramento, and one more that I can't remember off the top of my head, um, are not operating right now, but will come back as passenger travel resumes. And so, anecdotally, what I'm hearing from the airlines, both their corporate office and also, um, their local station managers, is that traffic in Boise is resuming at at least the national pace and perhaps faster. But, um, you know, it's anecdotal, and it's still hard to be excited about 1,500 passengers a day compared to 7,000 passengers a day.
Thank you so much, and I, I really appreciate your team out at the airport, working as hard as possible to keep everyone as safe as possible in something that has changed so very much in this pandemic, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, council member Thompson. And then in the queue is council member Sanchez.
Thank you Rebecca, and I apologize if, if you mentioned this and I missed it, but I know, uh, the auto industry has been especially hit hard in, um, both the selling of vehicles, but in tied to that, the rental vehicles, and I know across the US, many of those vehicles are ending up, um, in these lots and being sold. Um, I have a family member that just got one. I, have you seen, um, the inventory being sold off, uh, at, at the Boise Airport, similar to other areas?
The rental car companies have not reported to us that they're selling vehicles, they have a fleet, and they increase and decrease the size of their fleet in Boise based on the demand. What we do know is that they have parked a significant number of vehicles in Boise. I think relative to the discussion of the fact that Hertz Corporate has filed for bankruptcy and is restructuring. Now in Boise, it's completely convoluted because our Hertz Corporation, or our Hertz franchise here is actually owned by a franchise owner and not owned by Hertz Corporate. So our, our Hertz operation in Boise has not been impacted by the bankruptcy. However, Hertz, the parent company, also owns Dollar and Thrifty, and so that has been impacted by the bankruptcy filing. So, there are lots of nuances that are going into this, and again, it all comes back to how quickly the industry recovers, because people, I think, might be more likely to want a rental car as opposed to being in a ride share. And, but time will just have to tell.
Thank you.
Go ahead, council member.
Thank you, um, hi Rebecca, it's good to see you.
Nice to see you too, nice to see all of you.
I know, it's nice, right? Um, I have a question, and again, I apologize if I, if you shared this information and I missed it. But as we are opening up more and more, and hopefully getting back to whatever normal's gonna be in the coming months, um, is there any sort of precautions that we're taking to make sure, I don't even know if this is even allowable, but folks who may be, um, infected with the virus boarding a plane, are, are we taking any sort of precautions for that? Since, from what I understand about the way, the way airplanes work, the air is circulated, correct? And even with the masks in place, we're kinda all breathing the same air, right? So I'm just wondering if, you know, just for the folks who might be listening, if they might have questions like that, you know, what precautions we might be taking in addition to wearing the masks?
Well, I think it's interesting, council member Sanchez, because the guidance from CDC and all of these other organizations is, as we all know, has changed multiple times throughout this pandemic. Wear a mask, no, don't wear a mask, no, really, wear a mask. Um, and then, you know, what the right distance is, and whether or not something can be spread through, you know, surfaces, all of these things are in question. And so, the key is that we're doing everything that we can, you know, the things that are within our span of control, the increased cleaning, the frequency, the social distancing. For example, we've removed chairs from the gate hold room, so that way we can spread them out a little bit more. Um, the airlines have increased their cleaning, uh, surfaces and lengthened their times between um, the aircraft arrival and the aircraft departure, so they can do more in-depth cleaning. Uh, regarding your point about air circulation, I know it sounds counterintuitive, but they do actually bring fresh air into the cabin. And so, this is not my area of expertise, I've read one article on it, so we can all go out and Google it. But, um, according to the article that I read, the air exchange in the aircraft is actually, um, would, would promote better health and would not contribute to the, um, virus being spread further than any other place. But again, that's based on my limited knowledge in the article that I read, you know, in our industry publications, so.
Okay, so people, a quick follow-up, Mayor. Okay, so people, a quick follow-up, Mayor. Um, so for example, we're, we're not like testing people's temperature or anything like that before they board a plane? Everybody's on, they're not sick to their knowledge?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And that's consistent with what's being done across the country.
Okay, great, thank you Rebecca.
Thank you all.
All right, well, thanks Rebecca. Appreciate you being here. We know that in the coming, um, weeks and months, I expect we'll hear from you again. Um, really appreciate your financial stewardship of the airport through this tough time. And, um, look forward to hearing about better days ahead. Um, but in the meantime, really appreciate the work you're doing to get us through it.
Well, thank you all for all of your work. Appreciate your, your leadership. And I know that this has been a time of changing policies and, you know, just when we think we have something in place, it changes. But I appreciate your stewardship and your leadership and, uh, thank you for your time today.
Take care.
Thanks Rebecca.
Bye-bye. Okay, next up we have, I go, I can't see all the names again, so I'm probably gonna, I see Rhiannon, I see Anna Marie, I see Mark, and then Elizabeth, I'm not sure if you're here as counsel for the evening or on the housing presentation. Uh, but we'll now walk through the work of our, um, housing team and, you know, what's next? Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having us, Madam Mayor, City Council. And I'm gonna let Anna Marie start off and then I will join in. Go ahead, Anna Marie.
You're muted, Anna Marie. See bottom left, there's a little mute button.
There it is. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. I'm not used to Zoom, I'm used to team meetings, so thanks for your patience. You know, putting together this presentation, we all realized that many of our new council members haven't seen hardly any of this. And so it seemed like you got elected, we got a chance to meet, then this unbelievable pandemic hit and it was like a pool game. We all went different ways and haven't seen each other for a long time. So I think this will be a good presentation for you. I think it'll be really helpful. And, um, we're gonna leave time at the end for questions and get through this as soon as possible so we have ample time for, for us together. Thank you, Rhiannon, next slide. And I'm not sure where Rhiannon is.
Well, that's one way to get through it quickly.
It is. Um. Let's see.
Sorry, having some technical difficulties.
Okay.
Okay, can you see my screen at all? I apologize.
Yes, we can see the PDF version.
Okay, that's, that's what I needed. Okay. Here we go.
Perfect. So next slide, this, we'll watch the agenda real quick. Well, Rhiannon's, there she goes.
Don't worry about it, Rhiannon, it always happens. It's just at least one person every evening, so we'll get through it, don't worry.
Really quick on the agenda, I want to suggest to you to put this presentation in context. We often talk about housing homelessness together because they are intertwined. It's without a doubt, they affect each other. But sometimes it can be overwhelming, at least for me, when I think about the housing needs we have in our community and the homelessness needs, that sometimes we could approach each separately to give the capacity and, and, and initiatives that it needs to have the approach. So for purposes of today, think about housing as an umbrella. And homelessness, those experiencing homelessness are absolutely a audience or client or population that we need to assist under this housing umbrella. But we have others, like Our Path Home, which addresses our homelessness strategies. We have our federal funds, which address housing. We have Our Path Home, which is another set of housing initiatives. So if that's helpful for you going forward, it is for me to just take a deep breath and think about today just housing. We're gonna talk about our progress so far on GORA Housing, some lessons we learned. And then Mark's gonna walk us through some activities and detail around the, the budget, which I think will be helpful. Next slide, Rhiannon, thank you. Okay, this is, this is GORA Housing, which a lot of you weren't with us when we began on this, this endeavor. In 2017, we started to work getting ready for people who were moving into our community. We knew people wanted to come from, from populations and urban, in urban cities that were, that didn't give people the opportunity to enjoy what we have here in Boise. And so we wanted to make sure that we were working on strategies that would provide, uh, housing supply mainly was the, the point of GORA Housing. So at that time, in 2018, we articulated we would need 20,000 new housing units for incoming residents. And over the next 20 years, we thought we'd have 50,000. That number is extremely conservative. And, and we chose it at that time with the studies we had that were reliable, but it needs to be updated. But the point of, of the exercise was that we needed to progress and move. And we could have spent a lot of time debating numbers, but we decided on a number and moved ahead. A thousand units identified needed per annual basis. And of those thousand, and I'll go through this a little bit later, 350 units would be needed for households who were experiencing income challenges, 80% AMI specifically. On the left side of your slide, the four strategies were selected under GORA Housing. They were specifically selected because they were ones we felt we could, um, happen as quickly as possible without a lot of, of legal challenges. Um, capacity in our community was something we also looked at. This does not include everything we already do today. It does not include our homeownership program, doesn't include our home improvement program, doesn't include our rental housing, doesn't include a lot of activities that were already happening. But these were new to us in certain ways. And so the first one was, again, to establish a land trust, and I'll go through that in a minute. Expand our housing incentive program, align our resources and partnerships in a way we've never done before, and continue to push ahead and maximize our land use allowances. Next slide, Rhiannon. So on the first GORA Housing strategy, which was to establish our housing land trust, for those of you who don't know, a land trust is really simply the city or an entity purchasing, buying or selling to secure land and then in turn leasing it for development. And that lease can be scaled to accommodate the deeper affordability in whatever del- about development you want to proceed with. There's multi-family and homeownership land trusts across the country. Um, the one big piece we felt we could implement in terms of a land trust was our experience. But we wanted to make sure, so we invited a consultant with Burlington Associates. Burlington Associates at that time was one of the top two, um, vendors in the country that were providing expertise around how to establish a land trust. We welcomed Mike Brown to our community. Mike is a 40-year-plus veteran of land trusts. He did extensive interviews, looked at our capacity, looked at our portfolio we have today, and he said, you absolutely can do a land trust. And in fact, um, the fact that your municipality and your tax exemption on the land can create an important incentive for development. So I just want to be real clear with all of us so far that the land trust can offer a reduced amount of taxes. So if a developer were to build a building, that building envelope is still taxed by the county, but the land is not because we would enter, uh, enter into a long-term lease with that developer. And usually that long-term lease is about 99 years. So the, the consultant said, absolutely, that's really important, particularly because developers often struggle with obtaining the finances to secure land. And it allows for a incentive for them to secure other resources to leverage that investment. Leveraging our land holdings was also something we looked at, which is the city's got land, that's one thing we do have. Um, can we use it? Is there land that's underutilized today and can we use it to incentivize housing? Recently, I think last month, uh, Madam Mayor and City Council approved an important IBC that allowed us to augment our team, that GORA Housing manager position is being recruited today and is in it, and is in its second week and will close this, this week, actually. So we'll see what kind of interest we're gonna get, um, for that program manager position. One other item I want to mention on the operationalizing the land trust is, land trust gives us an opportunity to scale a lease rate. So if you invite a mixed income development on city-owned land and you want to serve market and income-challenged households, you can adjust your lease rate to accommodate for that. And that's one of the beautiful things, I think, for a land trust and, and providing that mixed income approach. The second strategy I want to talk about is the housing incentive program. Those of you are familiar with the downtown housing incentive program. That's kind of how this started was, is there a cash incentive we can provide to the development team in our community to elicit and incentivize housing? And particularly housing that is affordable, a deep affordability. And we again hired a consultant, Leland Consulting out of Portland. We had them look at this plan to tell us if, number one, are we in the, are we even in the right track? Um, is this possible? Can we incentivize with the small amount we had identified, which by the way was 5,000? Essentially, they said, no, there's no way you're gonna, you're going to even cover, even come close to cover all costs that developments undertake usually. But if you combine an increased incentive along with the land trust, you've got something really that you can bring to the development community. So we again, um, are, have asked that our GORA Housing program manager take this under. Those policies and procedures are in process right now. Of those two strategies, just one thing I want to mention, once the, the building gets built, our, our process doesn't end. In fact, it's just beginning usually. So a lot of these carry a assumption that we will not only monitor for compliance, monitor that they're serving the households we want them to serve, but they're ensuring affordability for a long period of time. This is another benefit to the land trust. Next slide, thank you, Rhiannon. Okay, our last two strategies under GORA Housing that we identified was the alignment of private and public funding. Really quick, uh, we were able to secure very, very quickly after we started this process was, uh, Capital City Development Corporation has a program where in which they offer resources for developments. We were able to negotiate that that program served lower-income households. It was really targeted towards workforce and, um, they're now operating 80% area median income households, providing support, financial support for the development of housing. The one thing we also learned, uh, that I don't think we fully have vetted or, or at least explored an opportunity is the economic development role in terms of partnerships. I absolutely think major employers, uh, can play a greater role and that it is incumbent on the city to invite that cooperation. Um, the people who we work with today are, are partners that are the hospitals and those that share the same goals we do. I think our partnership take is, is most beneficial if we look for, for entities that we normally don't work with and include the ones we do. And then lastly, maximize land use allowances, a lot of discussion around this. We're moving, we're moving on this, modifying our zoning code. Um, looking at a density bonus for housing, and in particular, I think this will really impact the opportunity zone on the bench. And then one takeaway we were able to get down was the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that we updated. So what are our demographics today? What are we talking about when we say 80% area median income? Just to let you know, every year, HUD issues an annual median income for communities all across the United States. Today, our, our, our median income for a family of four is 74,800. So in 2018, when we began the process of GORA Housing, we looked at our demographics. And what you see there is roughly about 1,000 units that we identified. 350 of those would need to serve that blue, yellow and red, uh, population. Those are the households that, that a lot of our federal funds are designed for. But in particular, the 10% and 9%, the yellow and red, that population is the most in need of housing. And in particular, there aren't a lot of people serving this population today. And by the way, in our own rental housing, we're, we're in that extremely low category there on the top left, 30 and some 50%. That's a rare, uh, that's a rare development that can serve that type of income restriction, but it's possible. So we're gonna pass it to Mark to take you through the next few slides.
Thanks, Anna Marie. So one of the things Anna Marie talked about was the 1,000 new living units per year. And one of the things we've looked at is like, how are we doing or how have we been doing? And you can see in both 2018 and 2019, we were over 1,400 units per year. Um, you can also see the kind of, the, kind of the shift occurred. And again, this, this data is all, all pre-pandemic. But, uh, you can see that we were, we were shifting, um, more towards multifamily. So kind of the, the lessons learned there that we were exceeding 1,000 units per year that aligns with both how, our housing and transportation assumptions. And obviously, there's been a shift towards multifamily units. Obviously, it's, it's easier to deliver economics in, in a multifamily project than it is a single-family project just based purely on unit cost of the product. Um, but what we hadn't seen was this excess supply, uh, was not reducing housing prices, uh, yet. Um, but there, you know, and I'm gonna get to this in a couple of slides, but it was interesting to see what we're seeing in multifamily. Um, next slide, please, Rhiannon. So we talked about the thousand, now we talked about the 350. So how did we do in 2019? You know, what was completed? And, you know, it, it appears that we fell short, you know, with the projects that we know about. The, these were all projects that had, um, some, a level of, uh, low-income housing tax credit support, but we produced 169 of the 350 units. But what we didn't know and what we went and got was what, what's called naturally occurring affordable housing or NOAA data. Uh, we went out and contracted with a vendor to basically study all multifamily projects that were completed in late 2018, early 2019 so that we could get an assessment of that. Um, the other thing that some cities do is they do a certification registration program so that they, they have, um, access to this, this data. It's probably a little bit more of an expensive program to operate, but right now, we're, we're going with, you know, using third-party vendor data and we feel like it's pretty good. Um, next slide, please, Rhiannon. So this was the slide I've been alluding to, and this is relatively new. We, we've kind of, uh, assessed our data in about the last week. But for the new multifamily projects, and this, it was interesting because the way we measure the projects I gave you in the 1,400 units, we actually look at everything that's finalized in 2019. But some of these projects, in, in a multifamily project, for example, they might've had some units that were finalized in late 2018 and other units that were finalized in early 2019. So we have a bit of overlap when we study these specific apartment, uh, projects, but there's over 700 units in this. And what's interesting about these is you can see that on the 120% of AMI, the workforce housing, that all, 100% of those units, uh, would qualify for, for workforce housing. Again, you can see there's three persons per bedroom, two and a half persons per bedroom, two persons per bedroom, and I, I will let Anna Marie touch on that in a bit. Then you can look at 80% AMI, there were about 80% of those units were affordable on a three persons per bedroom, uh, standard. Now, a little over 60, uh, two and a half, and about 60% of those units would be considered affordable to 80% of AMI on a two persons per bedroom standard. But I think what this chart, uh, details and what Anna Marie pointed out is But I think what this chart details and what Anna Marie pointed out is that really the 50% and 30% AMI are not being addressed. I just want Anna Marie to talk about the the persons per bedroom count because there's some fair housing information that comes into that.
Thanks, Mark. This is my favorite slide, by the way, of this entire presentation because it really demonstrates where we need to be at in our community, helping those households. I just wanted to mention really quickly, we're very sensitive about the number of people per bedroom. Not only from a fair housing perspective, but just in terms of supply, the limited supply of housing in our community. In our own rental housing at the city of Boise, we have very large families in three-bedroom homes. And we absolutely encourage and are glad to be able to provide that housing. We're just sensitive around fair housing and occupancy. We don't acquire certain occupancies. It's something where we look at what's reasonable or not. I mean, this is fairly reasonable, but we would never, never discourage a larger family from being together. And that's happening now in our rental housing.
Thank you, Anna Marie. Next slide. So kind of financial lessons learned as we talked about, Anna Marie talked about Leland Consulting kind of and our goal to expand the Housing Incentive Program. And when we have the downtown incentive, you know, if it was 1,000 or 2,000 per unit, per living unit, was that meaningful? And so what we wanted to do here is kind of, is look at like, what's it taking to get things done? So the first example that I have up there for you is a dare. That project was 134 total units. There were 121 that were income-restricted at 60% of AMI. Total cost of the project was about 28.6 million or about 213,000 a unit. And the total, what I'm just using the term gap financing just to talk about the financial gap. There's other industry terms that relate to gap financing and I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about generally a funding gap. But if you added up the money that the city participated, participation, IHFA's participation and CCDC's participation in the project, it was about 57% of the total cost. So when you take that, you know, 50 or 16.2 million dollars over 121 units of affordable housing, the 60% AMI, it comes down to about a funding gap per unit of about 134,000. So that was one data point. We also had Leland look at something similar to us. They came to Boise, interviewed developments, studied development costs, studied rents, you know, studied different project types. And they gave us, you know, these are, I just extracted a couple examples from their lengthy report. But you could look at like an urban garden-style apartment, kind of like a Main Street apartment, maybe one level of parking and and four levels of housing above it. General density, about 45 units per acre, and that cost is about $200,000 per unit. And if we just assumed, you know, on a specific site, there were 213 units and about half of those were restricted just to 80%, that funding gap, just to take half those units to 80% of AMI is about $57,000 per unit. That was roughly 107 units on the half. The podium-style apartments are more like what you would see downtown, 120, Little Dancer, 125 units per acre with structured parking. And the difference in cost there really is the structured parking. It's about 240,000. There are probably some other utility-related costs, but just in that example, you could see like 389 total units, about half of those restricted just to AMI. And that would be about 95,000 per unit. You know, and that, the gap cost, again, it's not just initial construction cost, it's the ongoing cost. And this one will kind of, this one will take a different look at that and kind of explain just that. What we, we had these different examples, you know, we had a dare, we had Leland, but we asked DFA, our Department of Finance Administration, to help us out and take a look at it. And they, they actually, we debated on how we should approach it and they had a real interesting take on it. They said, why don't we just look at what fair market rent is and then to discount it and you look at that over the life of 20, you know, say 20 years of affordability, what does that cost? So in this chart, you can see like, taking a rent from 100% median income down to 30%, basically over a 20-year life will cost $125,000 per unit. 50%, you know, 50% would cost 91,000 per unit, 80% of area median income would cost about 40,000 units. So you see the lower, the closer you get to median, obviously, the lower the gap is. What we did here is a number of units Anna Marie pointed out, like what we needed in each of those categories. So we need 90 units at 30%, 150%, 160 to 80% for that 350 of affordability. So kind of that, that gives you a blended gap between those types of units of about $76,000 or a total, you know, a total need for this level of affordability of about 27,000 or 27 million dollars a year. I think it's important that I point out too, this isn't just, we're not just talking city funds into these projects. This, you know, IHFA is going to play the largest role in this, you know, through low-income housing tax credits, 9%, 4% combined with bond financing on the 4%. But I think that, you know, kind of the lessons learned on this, the, you know, the income restricted, the deeper the income restriction, the greater degree of financial support. It's very intuitive. I think also that Anna Marie pointed this out is if we can do blended, mixed-income projects where you do have some market rate units and you do have some of these other, you know, percentages of area median income, it's going to require less funding. So I mean, that's kind of the incentive, you know, not only is it better to have a mixed-income project just from a project viability perspective, but it also is, it's easier to put in play from a financing perspective too. And I think it's also very important is these numbers are helping us triangulate on the truth. The funding gap will be project-based for every project. Next slide, please. So I'm going to touch on the budget detail now for our different housing activities. And you suggest, because I think you've probably seen these numbers in some of Eric's presentations, but we put them in a slide so that we can keep them straight. So I know that this should help you to keep it straight as well, but you know, fiscal '20, we had the initial grow our housing investment of 5 million. 1.1 million of that was used to purchase Franklin and Orchard. So we kind of have a net remaining of 3.9. In fiscal '20, we also had the kind of, I'll call it rehab and replacement of our existing rental housing portfolio, which has over 300 units in that. There's about 6.1 million allocated for that. Most of that will go towards preservation and rehabilitation, but we do believe about 2 million of that can go towards replacement of rental housing units as they end their useful life. In fiscal '21, we have the proposed, you know, proposed allocation of $3 million. It was savings from the stadium. And in fiscal '22, we're showing 3 million as well. So you can see kind of over, you know, this year and the next couple of years, it'll be about 17.1 million dollars and almost 12 of that can go towards new housing. Next slide, please. So, so the question is like, how do we use the 12 million? And again, it's almost back to that analogy, kind of it's all project-based. It's like, we've got to look at our different options. So on the left-hand side of this chart, we could, you know, we have activities requiring capital. We've talked about the Housing Incentives Program. There may be opportunities us to to incent a smaller number of affordable units into a project that doesn't have LIHTC, the housing tax credits associated with it. But then we may also choose, may choose to give a smaller amount per unit if we're subsidized, you know, helping to to close that gap for a project that has LIHTC financing. We've talked about the Housing Land Trust, you know, we've to utilize, you know, Franklin and Orchard, you'll be getting an update on that in the future, but that's a perfect example of using funds, using these funds to go acquire land, do an RFP and create affordable, you know, mixed-income affordable housing in an area that needs it. The last opportunity for us is on the Housing Land Trust also, as we can continue to pursue opportunistic land acquisitions for housing along key transit corridors and again, you know, trying to create that value for the market. The other activities are really, you know, Anna Marie touched on these kind of around a lot maximizing our land use allowances. That was one of the pillars of the strategy and partnerships. And we also threw in there kind of the rent survey, kind of the continuation of the need for data in this process. Back to Anna Marie.
Oh, thanks. Brianna, can you go back to that slide just real quick before we leave it? I forgot to mention when we were reading the strategies, your activities you describe on the left, the Housing Incentive Program, the Land Trust. One of the pieces we found, one of the lessons I learned was the ability to be flexible was really, really important and the ability to meet the market at the time it came to us, just like we learned recently on COVID and and how the city's flexibility and nimbleness made us survive, allowed us to to continue not only to survive, but to be a leader for our community. I think these two right here are really important for us to be as flexible as possible, which is a challenge in a municipality. I know it is. But I'm convinced that that's the way we need to be, the best place we can be. And then last slide, we'll leave it on high note. This is cloaked in HUD funding, but just to give you a flavor of some housing that's actually happening. Valor Point, our permanent supportive housing project on State Street, our second project, 27 units, is set to close this August and will start leasing. The investment there, 1.250 and then 250 in City General Funds. Sixon Grove, we'll start here shortly. Randan's been working on that project with Elizabeth. We're about, oh, close to 1.5 on that investment with our HUD funds. And we direct with community feedback on where those HUD funds go. Celebration Acres, which is a project by Alada at Emerald and Fairview, I think. It'll be 42 units at 1.6, very early on in the project, but we have given them, we have given them a pre-commitment on those funds. Autumn Gold, fantastic nonprofit who is focusing on homeownership. Looks like a small number there, but when you look to the right, 850,000, that's not a small number. What they do is buy, rehab, and resell homes to income-restricted households. And they also build new. And their focus is on 40, 50, and 60% area median income, which is really good for homeownership. And then lastly, in process, last phase, I think, or close to the last phase, 80 units on Vista. We bought that property in 2000. It's a former hotel, repurposed it into rental housing. And currently, we've taken it down to the studs and are remodeling that to ensure long-term affordability for our community. So over 8 million is happening right now in terms of investment for housing with 200-plus units.
I think it's also important just to point out on that slide, just to distinguish, that is other than the 250 in general fund, that, those are HUD funds and not to be confused with the 11.9 million that was presented a couple of slides prior.
And it just so happens that that's an average of 40,000 per unit, which actually is, is what our analysis said we would need to invest for that 80% area median income. Which is interesting, it just so happened to be that way. But that money you see there, 8 million, it's probably at least five times that in terms of total project costs. So we're really leveraging other resources too. And we're done with the presentation and we'll open for questions. Thank you.
Looks like Councilmember Sanchez might have a question. Now I can see everybody, so I'll look for the unmute sign.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Anna Marie. Thank you, Mark. So you know, what I bring to the table when we have these discussions is just a lot of personal experience. As many of you know, I've been a renter for the last 10 years out of necessity because during the last recession, I I lost my home to foreclosure after two years of struggling to hold my home. And for the want of $5,000, I lost my home to foreclosure. And I just wonder, you know, as we move into this this new recession, I think we're all pretty clear that that's going to happen. You know, are we anticipating ways that we can, we can prevent what happened to me? I mean, $5,000 is not a lot of money, but it's an impossibility when you don't have it. And do we have anything in place or anything that we can refer folks to to avoid that? Because if I'd had the option through a program, I would very happily still be a homeowner. The truth of the matter is, you know, I look back on it now. A friend actually offered to loan me $5,000. But there's something about accepting money from a person and not being able to pay back a person versus feeling like you can stand up on your own and just get help from a program rather than depend on an individual personal loan. And I didn't accept that money because I didn't know if that would be enough, if I would, if that money would not be enough to save my home, I would lose my home. And then on top of that, owe a friend $5,000. So I just want to bring that up as something that we might want to be considering or, and to see if there's any, anything in our plans moving forward to take that to consideration. And also, what were the effects of people having their homes foreclosed upon the last recession here in Boise, if we can get any information like that as we move forward? Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez, I'm happy to address what we're doing right now with regards to the CDVG Cares Funds that we received from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. One of the strategies that we looked at was this exact conversation that you've just described. And we wanted to make sure that we were taking into consideration that our rental market is so tight and that if a household does go into foreclosure, we're bumping, they're getting bumped from homeownership into a tight rental market. So 500,000 of our Cares Funds is going to NeighborWorks, who is going to be doing foreclosure prevention. And that will allow them, depending on area median income, the ability to do up to three months' worth of mortgage assistance to keep those households housed. And so that was really the most significant chunk and it will be coming through in a contract by the end of the month is what we're hopeful for. That you'll be approving for that support. In terms of the ongoing data that you're asking for, in terms of the long-term impact of foreclosure from the previous recession, we don't have that, but I'm certainly happy to do some additional research to again, learn from lessons to prevent in the future.
Brianna, thank you. This is like Christmas in June. Thank you.
My pleasure. And I really have to say a major thank you to Neighbor Works Boise. They were the ones that when we kind of looked at this and who in the area would be most apt to really facilitate this pretty quickly, they were very great partners to us and have welcomed this with big arms. And in fact, our funds will also be leveraged with the City of Meridian's Cares Funding. So the City of Meridian will also be having funds that support foreclosure prevention in their community as well. So we've been trying to do the best to leverage each community's CDVG funds.
Great news. Thank you so much, Brianna. Thank you for all your work. It means so much. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, I also wanted to mention, having lived through the recession here, it was really sad to see families walk away from their home, but when that door closed, one opened and we were able to purchase a lot of our portfolio, which is single-family housing at a really reduced rate and when they went to the programs operated by the government. What do I see today? I see commercial development that is foreclosing. I project that there'll be a really, a need for us to repurpose some of that real estate into housing and that we need to be thinking ahead of and preparing for what this pandemic is going to do to our community as best we can.
Thank you, Anna Marie. Just a quick follow-up, Mayor. I would just like to say, the best, the best part of having that very painful experience of 10 years ago is to be able to tap into it now and to be able to offer up that on-the-ground perspective. And I would just like to say, moving forward, I would very much like to be part of meetings where this is discussed, just to offer that perspective. What Brianna mentioned earlier about having folks displaced due to a foreclosure. I was displaced from my own foreclosure, moved into a rental, displaced from that rental two years later. I was displaced from my own foreclosure, moved into a rental, displaced from that rental two years later because they got foreclosed on, moved into another rental and finally ended up here. So, um, I know firsthand what it looks like to be bounced around and to have different types of, of, of quality, of level of quality of homes and neighborhoods, um, which is all perspective that I bring to the council now. And so I very much want to be able to use those challenging experiences to bring that perspective to meetings that moving forward we have about housing. So, uh, thank you for all your work, Anna Marie.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Halliburton?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. You're on the ball. Um, I just had a question to, um, see if we've seen an increase in the amount of people building or applying for ADUs over the last couple of years as it's become a larger part of the conversation. And if we can tell at all, if any of those are going for, you know, what, what level they're going for as far as the people that they're serving.
Mark, you want to take that one?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton. We did a study looking back about 10 years and generally speaking, I'm going to say we were averaging about six per year up until like 2017, 2018, 2019. I think we, we creeped up to make closer to 20 per year. So we have seen that grow. There is a debate whether or not that, that their, that ADUs are technically affordable or not, you know, depending on their location, some maybe, some may not. But just when we had this discussion at the IHFA conference in March, I think most people agreed, the important thing is that it's, it's some place for somebody to move into and it creates an opportunity for somebody else if it's not affordable.
Perfect. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for Mark or for Anna Marie, but, um, I'm trying to get my head around the big picture strategy here. My understanding is that a pretty good chunk of the property inside our city limits is not on the tax rolls now. And I guess I, I don't really understand the tax burden impact as we acquire more property, take property off the tax rolls to incentivize, to, to make it pencil out to develop. Like what that does to the rest of the tax picture, because of course, people who are making the median income and paying their property taxes are feeling that squeeze too. And I'm not, you know, I guess I don't need an answer right now, but have we done that work to see, you know, gosh, if we keep on this trend for 20 years, 30 years, what that does to the low-income residential homeowner from a tax perspective?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Beijen, I think that there's an opportunity for us to do further analysis on that. I do want to mention that when the land trust program was designed initially, it was not the intent that the city would continue for 20, 30 years and operate it. It was the intent that we get it started, get it set up, make some really important purchases, secure that for affordability going forward, and then eventually transition it to a community-based organization who could, I think, not only expand it, but also include some homeownership activities. So, great question. I will make sure and deliver that information to Mayor and Council. Um, again, with that said, um, in terms of the land trust acquisitions and particularly leveraging our own land holdings, I don't see it very, very significant where in which it would require an in-depth analysis um, and hesitation about what we want to do.
Yeah.
Quick follow-up.
Member Beijen, can I?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, I, I would also say there's an order of magnitude issue too. And I would say, you know, if you're talking $3 million in land, you could be talking $30 million of improvements that are taxable.
Down the line.
And so I think that's just, uh, I, I think it's, there is an opportunity to put, put the improvements on the tax rolls and that's going to be a far more significant, you know, taxable amount than the land.
That's fantastic. What, I mean, they, they, really the question I was trying to ask is, help me be able to articulate why this is a good deal. And, um, the order of magnitude comment you made makes perfect sense. The taxable improvements make perfect sense. But I don't actually know any facts. It's just kind of makes sense. So it, that would be helpful, um, to the extent you can put it together.
Councilmember, um, about a year ago, I read Anna Maria gave me a stack about this big of studies on land trusts and, um, case studies of where they've worked and the operations of them and the benefits, et cetera. But you might, as like, I know that you love to read stuff too. You might actually, if you're interested in housing, um, ask Anna Marie to send it your way or drop it off, um, because there's great information in there to catch up on.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And did Elizabeth, did you have something or was it just your boys that wanted to get a couple words in edgewise?
I, I actually just wanted to confirm because I had actually missed this little part of it, um, while talking to them. That I just wanted to make sure everyone understood what was taxable and what isn't from the land trust perspective. One of the things is that the land that we own is not the property taxes. We do not actually, that we do not pay obviously property tax on our land. However, and we've gone rounds and rounds about this and back and forth with the county, and we think we finally have the answer. And the building, if it is owned by the developer, they actually still are paying taxes on that. So the benefit from the city, one of the other benefits in addition to the lower lease rate with our, um, housing land trust is that they also get that reduced tax rate, or they don't have to pay the property taxes on it. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear, but I, Mark may have covered that while I was up talking to my kids.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I was waiting to make sure everyone who wanted to, TJ, if you want to pop in, let me know. I, the housing folks have, have heard me say this, but wanted to have this discussion in, in public now. If you look at the 11 million or 12 million dollars that we have available, it's really only a year's worth of gap for those most in need. And so it's clear that even with the significant, um, work that we're doing with the general fund money, there's not enough there to do all the work that we need. So I'm also interested in those other tools that we might pursue that will incent the private developers to produce more of the kind of private housing that we think that, um, folks in this area will, will certainly need to be able to afford it. And so things like the zoning, um, changes and wondering if we can work really hard in the next bit to identify two or three that can go forward before the zoning, the bigger zoning code update, so that we can really work on that piece to uh, work on affordability. I know that's been an interest of yours as well. So I'm hopeful that we can work on something there. I think public-private partnerships, we, a couple of pieces of land that we own and a couple of the uh, existing housing developments that we own, I think are ripe for redevelopment in a public-private partnership that may not just replace the units that we already have, but also add a number of others again at, at, with the private sector doing the biggest of the lift on that. ADUs, uh, Councilmember Halliburton mentioned those. I think that there's an opportunity maybe to look at programs that would encourage those and especially encourage them to go to affordable housing. And then I'd like to look at things that we might be able to do, um, to incent homeownership, whether it be um, partnering with the Idaho Housing and Finance Association on some home, some down payment assistance or other things. But, um, you know, as I say this, I was wanting, want to say thank you to Mark and Rhiannon and Anna Marie and everyone else who's done, Elizabeth, who's done this really good work to bring us to this point. And I think when we started this, we didn't have a, a real grasp on how far we could go with the resources we already have. And now we do. And it's exciting because we can get probably halfway there for the next couple of years. And that's, I think, further than many of us thought we could. So now what's the next step that, that will take us beyond that? So, you know, thanks everyone for the hard work. I wish I could say, I thought that now we could relax, but I don't think that's probably the case. I think we're probably going to have to double down and work harder, but I think there are things to do there.
The absolute last thing we can do.
That's right. That's right. But I, but I think that we've identified the tools that will begin to, to continue to move us forward. So, so thank you, but, but let's, um, let's just keep this momentum going.
I appreciate that. Council President Protem? No? Yes?
Sure. I was, I was kind of like waffling on it.
I'm sorry to, sorry to call you out.
No, you're fine. I mean, I, I should say this in public. And I, and Anna Marie and Mark and Rhiannon, uh, wonderful work. And I'm so happy that we have you guys maturing out this plan, um, so that we have something really solid going forward. One thing that we've talked about in the past is creating some mechanism to encourage some of that naturally occurring, um, affordable housing that we've talked about in the past. So I know that that isn't necessarily part of the conversation yet. Uh, but I think it would really be who us to make that a big part of the conversation because as properties age, those are usually the ones that become a little bit more affordable. New properties come on the line and those tend to, because of the expense of building them, um, tend to be the ones that are closer to market. So I think that keeping an eye on what we could do, um, around those that may age out to keep those from then getting remodeled and becoming luxury apartments would really benefit us.
Madam Mayor, uh, Council Protem Woodings, I, I think I, I would like Rhiannon to talk about that because she has the housing needs analysis that was completed by the Truvian. And basically they do list, at least from a, I, I believe it's a Lytech perspective, the, the, so that we now have a list of units as that will age out over time and, and kind of, I don't know if that gets incorporated into the five-year plan, but Rhiannon can speak to that.
Yeah, um, Madam Mayor, Council Protem Woodings. So that, we're just about at the final stages of our community development analysis. And, and I just want to share briefly, it is normally just a housing analysis, but we actually took it on this broader context of health and housing. And how can we, um, look at doing a little bit different with our federal funds? That really is from this auspice of how do we make our neighborhoods the most livable? Knowing that sometimes it takes a long time to bring housing online. So with that, one of the strategies that we had talked about, because we, we do hear this quite frequently is how can we prevent those low-income housing tax credit properties once they reach their 15 years? How can we prevent them from being converted to high-end? And so I think one of the opportunities before us, as we go into our next five-year planning process, which will start in October, is looking at putting aside some of our, our CDVG program funds to help be a player in whether it's doing a loan to the owner or finding a new owner. But I think there's a way for us to use our federal resources to help keep those as, um, ongoing units for the households that they were originally intended to serve. Um, is our federal funds going to be the sole answer? No, but I do think it can be a player as we look to the bigger strategies of how to keep these, um, units on, on the path that they were intended to be. So more information to come certainly on that, um, in particular, as we begin our next five-year planning process. And then we also have his, since really the eighties, been doing homeownership rehab. We've also had it available for multifamily property owners who rent to income-eligible households. We've had this fund available to make loans to. So again, we have that as a vehicle. It's not the end-all be-all, but it can be a piece of the, um, leverage of resources.
That's fantastic. Thank you for calling out those resources that we already have too. I think that's, um, great to keep reminding the public that, um, we have that available. Thanks, Rhiannon.
All right. Well, it looks like we're good. I want to say thank you also to Mark, Anna Marie, Rannan and Elizabeth for the work that you've done to bring us to this point. Um, the Council President's right, we cannot relax. There's a lot we can do, we have to do um, to respond to the needs of our community. And also there's a lot that we can do from a policy perspective, as you brought up, um, that can encourage more to be there beyond the investments we can make with our, with our dollars. So look forward to more conversations and really, really appreciate, um, the work of our housing team and the partnership that we have with others to make all this happen.
Thank you.
And with that, we get an extra six minutes.
All right.
We'll be, so I'll see, this is our, for those of you watching right now, um, this is our first, um, tonight at six o'clock. Um, when you tune in to watch, it'll be the first hybrid meeting, um, since the early days of our shutdown. So Council President Clegg and Councilmember Sanchez will, um, join me here in City Hall. And I will probably need a little bit of time to get used to again, like looking at computers, looking up at big screens. But we'll figure it out and we're looking forward to the meeting. Take care, everybody. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
See you soon.